...that building a sustainable and resilient society. We must therefore develop and utilise their creativity and innovative skills and to explore avenues to facilitate youth involvement in planning and preparation for the future. A CARICOM Youth Forum was held last month, which brought together youth groups, youth leaders, youth workers and other key stakeholders to examine current youth development needs. The Dean of the CARICOM Youth Ambassadors will present to this conference salient recommendations arising from the event for the attention of the heads of government. Over the next two days, deliberations of the conference will include engagements with the Secretary General of the Organisation of African Caribbean and Pacific States, His Excellency George Rabelo Pinto Chikote. I welcome him to the region and to Suriname. Chair, Heads of Government, we meet at a time of severe global crisis in three vital areas, namely food, energy and finance. Addressing solutions for our region requires collective intellect and acting together. This task is not beyond us, as we have proven time and time again. Let us therefore, once more, on to the breach and make a difference in the lives of all people. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Secretary General of the CARICOM, the Honourable Dr Carla Barnett. May we invite to the stage the newly-elected Head of Government, Prime Minister of the Bahamas, the Honourable Philip Davis.
Fellow colleagues, CARICOM Secretary General, Dr Carla Barnett, our outgoing Chairman, the Honourable John Prisino, incoming Chairman, His Excellency Chandri Pasad Santoki, United Nations Secretary General, Antonio Guterres, and fellow Heads of Government. As one of the newer Heads of Government in the region, I've been grateful for the opportunities during the first nine months of my administration that allowed me to connect and reconnect with friends and colleagues from around the region. It is a pleasure to welcome the new elected leaders from St Lucia, the Honourable Philip Pierre, and Grenada, the Honourable Deacon Mitchell as well. Each one of us faces the extraordinary challenges associated with these times. These occasions to meet and work together are a gift, and I know many of you share my determination to make the most of the opportunities they present. Colleagues, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas gained full independence in 1973, the same year that the Caribbean community and common market were founded. It is providential that in 2023, in the Bahamas, we will observe our 50th anniversary celebrations and in the days leading up to that observance, we will hand over the Chair of CARICOM. This is an opportune juncture to remind ourselves of the many ways our community of friends and partners are bound together. Our connection only begins with shared geography. Like any family, our members do not always see eye to eye, but our interwoven histories, traditions and relationships provide a foundation for meaningful deliberation, collaboration and innovation. Forty-nine years ago, we were focused on the potential opportunities of regional integration. Today, we find ourselves focused on confronting shared challenges, including the economic constraints and vulnerabilities inherent to small island developing states, the ongoing COVID pandemic, which includes new variants, depleted healthcare systems, long-term health impacts and the need to strengthen prevention, surveillance and treatment; a global inflation crisis, which leaves many of our people struggling to afford food, energy and housing costs; social security systems stretched to the maximum as we seek to provide safety nets; and of course, the existential threat posed by climate change. It is striking that so many of our most urgent struggles derive in great part from external causes. We are each responsible for making our individual countries stronger and more resilient to the impact of external events. But, the history of our region makes clear that we can have a greater impact if we also join forces and stand together. The Bahamas is one of the ten countries in the world most vulnerable to climate change. While every country in the world is facing adverse and extreme weather events, the countries in our region face extraordinary and immediate risk. We have heard for many, many years about the good intentions of others. I know you join me in seeing the urgency of moving beyond promises and pledges. It's time for action. Fortunately, there is hope on horizon. Due to our joint and persistent advocacy, work is now underway in the global community on the development of a multi-dimensional vulnerability index that will better measure our development needs and improve access to development assistance. But we also have to be careful about the components of the vulnerability index and what weight will be placed to each of those aspects. This August, we have been invited to host the UNFCC Regional Heads of Government Meeting pertaining to climate financing and adaptation ahead of COP27. I invite you all to attend. The Caribbean as a region will need more than $50 billion per annum to finance adaptation efforts and disaster recovery. Over the last few years, many of our countries have not fared well. Small ocean economies gain in negotiating strength and influence when we work effectively as one. It is no exaggeration to say that if we do not stand together, we, each one of us, is in danger of falling apart. The deadline to attain the 2030 Sustainable Development Goals agenda is a mere eight years away. Many of us are lagging in critical areas. There's no time to waste. So, what is standing in our way? What prevents us from moving closer to the ideals and aspirations of those who sat around that table forty-nine years ago before us and dreamt of better futures for us all? Friends, while the world's problems do wash upon our shores, sometimes we contribute to standing in the way of our own progress. We find it easy to walk away from settled agreements to pursue the course which we think will help our narrow national interests. Too many times, our countries have acquiesced to the pressures of larger, more developed states and the multinational corporations. Their approach of divide and conquer has hurt us all. Might we be deriving greater value from our tourism industries if we had continued to negotiate in concert with some of the large multinational corporations? And might we have fared better during the COVID-19 pandemic if we had acted together to secure vaccines and medicines? Just weeks ago, we lost a giant, the Barbadian writer George Lamming. He unflinchingly chronicled the legacy of colonialism and was a fierce believer in regional unity. In 1966, he wrote: "The architecture of our future is not only unfinished, but the scaffolding has hardly gone up." If we are honest, too little has been built since 1966. We can do much more. It's never too late to make progress in earnest. The scaffolding of our regional architecture, the scaffolding of our future is in our hands. When I addressed the UN General Assembly last September, I made the point that "you only will be safe when we are all safe." I reiterate this today with respect to our mutual destinies, and I note that we have important leadership in our CARICOM Secretariat, headed by a female for the first time in our history. Under the effective leadership of Secretary General Barnett, let us harness the expertise of our Secretariat to move forward together. With our vision restored and our courage firmly bound, we in this region can achieve great things. We can lift our people out of poverty. We can facilitate the generation of wealth and opportunity. And most of all, we can ensure our survival long into the future. My friends, most of us are descended from people who were forced to cross the ocean at the bottom of a boat, chained, malnourished and oppressed. They were able to do more than survive the brutality of their forced labour. They and the generations that followed built the foundations of our island nations. Surely, we can find the strength and courage to work together to face the challenges of our time. The National Anthem of Suriname reminds us that wherever our ancestors came from, we should take care of our country. With great respect, I will add, wherever our ancestors came from, we should take care of our countries and our region. We can find the determination and renewed purpose to leave behind something better for those who will follow us. I certainly believe we can. We will be better together. Thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister, Honourable Philip Davis, for your remarks and the reminder to keep seeing eye to eye. May we invite, for the next remarks, the newly-elected Head of Government, the Prime Minister of Grenada, the Honourable Deacon Mitchell.
Thank you. Your Excellency Chandri Pasad Santoki. Your Excellency, I'll have to say to you that I kept reciting your first name, hoping that I would get past this moment. I hope I've not done violence to it. President of the Republic of Suriname and Chairman of the Conference of the Heads of Government of CARICOM, other distinguished colleagues, Heads of Government of the Caribbean community, the Secretary General of CARICOM, Dr Barnett, Secretary General Antonio Guterres, pleasure meeting you today. Other distinguished Secretary Generals who are present, Heads of Regional Institutions that are here with us today, members of the regional security system and all other regional institutions, other distinguished representatives from the Caribbean Congress of Labour and the Caribbean private sector organisation, other distinguished and specially invited guests. To all of our youth organisations and young people who are here with us this evening, to the many other nationals and citizens who are also tuning in and watching via social media platforms and different broadcasts across the Caribbean. To all of you, I send wonderful greetings from the people of PT Martinique, Caracu and Grenada, and I say good evening to all. Let me first start by saying, we normally say Grenada, Caracu and PT Martinique, and I have rearranged the order to PT Martinique, Caracu and Grenada. And I think Comrade Gonzalez would appreciate that the Grenadian islands are small and perhaps my becoming Prime Minister of Grenada is a reflection of the rearranging of the order of things where more attention is paid to the small and the little. I'm honoured to join colleagues here in beautiful Suriname at this, the opening ceremony of the 43rd regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. I would like to place on record my gratitude to you, President Santoki and the government and people of Suriname for the kind hospitality extended to my delegation since her arrival today. My delegation appreciates the efforts made to facilitate this important meeting and look forward to a successful outcome. I also wish to congratulate President Santoki on your assumption of the chairmanship of the conference. I have no doubt that on the year stewardship, the conference will advance work that has been set before us and I look forward particularly to those engagements. It would be remiss of me if I did not commend Prime Minister Priseno for his stewardship of the chairmanship of the conference over the last six months. I had the opportunity to meet you today and I'm told that you've done a wonderful job over the last six months and so I want to express my own thank you, notwithstanding that I would not have been part of the work, but I'm sure that I will benefit from it as we go forward. Colleagues, I must add that I'm equally pleased to be sharing the stage this evening with the other newly-elected Heads of Government of CARICOM, the Prime Minister of the Bahamas, who just went before me, and the Prime Minister of St Lucia, who will come after me. Our presence here this evening is confirmation and testament that democracy is alive and well in our region and resident in our beautiful Caribbean community. And I'd say our transition processes seem far smoother, far swifter and far more efficient than some of the larger nations that champion democracy. I say this against the background of the recently concluded national elections in Grenada on the 23rd of June. My clarion call in my political campaign and that of my colleagues was for Grenadians to choose a different direction that would transform and move the people of PT Martinique, Caracu and Grenada forward. We campaigned on a vision where we wanted to create a sustainable, equitable and prosperous nation for all. We envisaged a nation and we believe that this is a time of choosing where we must stand resolute to enable every little boy and every little girl, every man, every woman, or every citizen, whoever dared to dream and look before them, that they should do, that they would do, that all have an equal opportunity to realise their potential and enjoy the fruits of the labour without fear of discrimination or to be told by critics and naysayers that the pursuit can't be done or it is too hard or too difficult to achieve. We envisage a nation and believe that it is a time of choosing where we must be transformed into an eco-friendly, fair, equitable, dynamic, prosperous and stable democracy capable of sustaining a high quality of life for our people. We envisage a nation and we believe that it is a time of choosing to ensure that the environment is protected and preserved for the use and enjoyment of our sons and daughters and both our current and future generations. A nation that is a model for sustainable development for small island developing states, where its citizens take pride in their culture, heritage and patrimony. We envisage a nation that embraces diverse faith communities and a harmonious interaction with each other. A nation that embraces diversity and practices tolerance at all times. And we believe that no man is above another man. Colleagues and friends, I have no doubt that if pursued vigorously, these ambitions are achievable, they are attainable and our Caribbean civilisation deserves them. As I reflect on our elections, our citizens have renewed hope and we have renewed hope in the consultative process towards development. It reminded us of the benefits to be derived from the inclusion of all citizens, the young and the young at heart, the farmer, the fisher folk, the student, the artist, the CEO and the politician. While in our democratic system, the winner takes all, we believe that losers must also be a part of nation building and members of parliament and members of the opposition must also be equally served. All must be included. That vision for Grenada is the same vision I share for CARICOM. I view our region through the same lenses. Grenada is willing, ready and eager to do its part in transforming our beloved Caribbean community. The region belongs to all of us. It is simply home. Our forefathers in 1973 envisioned a region with the ability to transform the lives of its people by working together. A community that can overcome its challenges if we, without reservation, dedicate ourselves, our time and our talents to moving CARICOM forward. In that regard, tomorrow, July 4th, marks the 49th anniversary of the signing of the Treaty of Shagaramis. As we celebrate CARICOM Day, I believe that this is an opportune time for us to pause and reflect on the many experiences we've had while in pursuit of regional integration. Over the last 49 years, we have had many moments to celebrate, coupled with moments that required solemn reflection, still while we continue to envision the future. As we look towards the commemoration of our 50th anniversary, we need to redouble our efforts to finding solutions to our challenges. Let us not restrict our engagements to the members of our community, but let us with purpose follow the path of the Caribbean Sea, like wise men seeking a brighten star and engage all countries touched by its warm waters, from Mexico to Venezuela, from Suriname to Haiti. We must also, my friends, bolster support for regional organisations, including the Association of Caribbean States and the community of Latin American and Caribbean states, making CARICOM the centre of enhanced cooperation for our region. The Secretary General and the Prime Minister of the Bahamas have set out some of the challenges we face, from climate change. In my brief interaction with my colleagues, the issue of regional transportation and air travel and sea travel is a major factor. The challenges of COVID-19 and ongoing future pandemics, food security. We know what those challenges are and the solutions lie with us. Colleagues, friends, as I conclude, over the last 49 years, the resolve of our region has been tested in many ways, but we are still here. We have shown that we are a resilient people who have been able to navigate through turbulent waters, but we are still here. For too long, this Caribbean community that we all love has been seen and viewed as a place where we talk and talk and talk and then we talk some more. And the question is, to what end? This time, colleagues and friends, and to our young people in particular, and I want to say this because I note the Secretary General commented that 60% of our population is aged 30 and under. Grenada recently elected three members of parliament who are 30 years and under. And I should point it, one of whom is female. All three have been given senior positions in the Cabinet of Grenada and in particular the female heads, the Climate, Resilience and Environment Ministry portfolio, as testimony to the importance of that ministry. So I have no doubt that Grenada and the rest of the Caribbean is filled with talented, capable, hardworking young men and women who are prepared to rise to the challenge and to solve and overcome the challenges that we all face. And so I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we collectively move CARICOM forward. And for the record, I am not one of those who are under 30. Thank you.
Thank you to the Prime Minister of Grenada, the Honourable Deacon Mitchell. May we invite the newly-elected Head of Government, the Prime Minister of St Lucia, the Honourable Philip J. Pierre.
Excellency, the President of Suriname, esteemed Heads, Secretary General of the United Nations, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I bring you greetings from the government and people of St Lucia. I speak to you today as one of the newly-elected Heads of Government, grateful and honoured for the opportunity to address this important body at such a critical time in our collective history. Colleagues, Madam Secretary General, I am sure you will all agree that there has been no other moment in our post-independence history under whose cloudy skies we are currently seeking shelter, which has challenged our collective existence. We are now experiencing the full brunt of runaway price increases for basic items such as fuel, flour and bread, compounded by supply chain issues. The Russian-Ukraine war has left the entire world reeling from rising inflation, making life for most households very difficult, more so for the people of our region. I recently had to convene a special meeting of my cabinet to discuss the price of bread in St Lucia. This is how serious and attentive these times have demanded. At this time, Madam Secretary General, we are still reeling from the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, which brought with it business closures, loss of productivity, reduced tourism arrivals and the reduction in government revenues. The demands on our public health system, which we shouldered to keep our people safe and the provision of social protection and support measures for vulnerable citizens have left governments of the region with very little fiscal space to move ahead, to grow their respective economies. And all of this has followed from at least two decades of external shocks, from the slowdowns and security costs from the September 11, 2001 terrorist attack on New York City and the global wars which followed these attacks, to the impact of the 2008 global financial crisis stemming from the subprime mortgage crisis in the US. Mr Chairman, in between these economic and geopolitical man-made crises, we have had to confront the natural annual cycles of cyclones and hurricanes, a feature of our environment which in recent years have been more ferocious, destructive and erratic. In my recent address to the Summit of the Americas, I made the point that while the world only hears of the major weather events because of international television coverage, there are persistent small events brought about by an average rainfall that cause significant damage, often manifested in landslides and flooding, and in the process impose additional severe strain on our island's already limited financial capability. Sadly, Mr Chairman, these destructive weather events are the results of climate change, for which we are not the offenders. So fellow Heads, given all these realities, you will appreciate that the euphoria of an election victory vanishes very quickly upon occupying the seat of the Prime Minister. Because the challenges that we face as leaders, especially the new ones, upon sober reflection are very apparent and, in a word, daunting. Mr Chairman, notwithstanding these dangerous winds, St Lucia's faith in CARICOM remains strong and unshaken. St Lucia continues to believe in the potential strength and protective shelter that CARICOM can provide. I witnessed firsthand the collective strength of CARICOM during the recent negotiations at the Summit of the Americas earlier this month. I want to assure you that I come to the Prime Ministership of St Lucia in the firm and abiding belief in Caricom. Mister Chairman, my regional philosophy has been shaped by the small population and size of the country that I lead, but I stand here to affirm that St Lucia will always be less than it can be without Caricom. Whenever we are faced by external challenges, not of our own making, I'm always guided by the words of the late Prime Minister Barbie D'Soune Affa, that we should face it and fix it. I'm also guided by the warning of our respected colleague and distinguished Prime Ministers at Westminster Grenadiers, that we shall avoid the reflexive learned helplessness, which arguably stems from our inherited colonial consciousness. So colleagues, I intend to use the responsibility that the people of St Lucia have placed on my shoulder to engage constructively with you and the Caricom Secretariat, and to join your collective experiences to advance the cause of Caricom. In this regard, I pledge to engage energetically within Caricom. We have already signaled our intention to be fully aligned to the Caribbean Court of Justice as the final appellate court in both civil and criminal matters. In this regard, the Governor of St Lucia has written to the Privy Council expressing this desire, at whom we have formed a committee led by respected jurists to continue the dedication of our people on this important issue. We must not allow our enforced circumstances of day-to-day survival to dull our memories of the reasons why our past leaders pursued the establishment of the Caricom single market economy, and why they saw it as the most optimum answer to the question of what is the next stage of Caribbean development? In light of all the global changes that has taken place in the decades since the initial treaty which established Caricom, at the center of the thinking behind the CSME was the need to create the conditions for the free movement of people and capital, and the need to establish a single economy as a unified space for joint growth and development for Caribbean businesses, and more importantly, for the improvement of the quality of life of Caribbean citizens. It should also be recalled that at the center of the CSME was a recognition that the issues of governance in terms of the functioning of the Caricom Secretariat had to be rewoked to facilitate the implementation of decisions and the day-to-day management of the CSME. Colleagues, it is fair to see that other than the energies which have gone to the pursuit of the single economy at the OECD level, and the establishment of the Caribbean Court of Justice at the wider Caricom level, we have not seen the kind of advances towards the CSME within Caricom as we had hoped. As we continue to face the new and emerging challenges of food shortages, the rising cost of basic foodstuffs, climate change, youth unemployment, gun violence and crime, and other social challenges, I urge that we refrain, we refrain our responses within the framework of the CSME. I also urge that we encourage a thorough inventory of the work of the various CSME working groups, so that we can reassess where we are and what is to be done to move the regional economic and political unification process forward. Alongside these assessments, St Lucia pledges to work within the OECD to advance the unification process within the subregion. Colleagues, colleague heads, St Lucia believes that without concrete technical action in response to the challenges that we face, we will see a deepening of the crisis and we will have no one but ourselves to blame for not devising the appropriate responses. We have complained for too long about the need for special and differential treatment given our vulnerabilities as since. We have demanded too often that our graduation into middle income status should not be used as a basis for denying us to concessionally financing reserves for the world's poorest and most highly indebted countries. We have made our voices heard loudly and clearly on the need for our climate vulnerabilities to be included in the global commitments to the financing for climate change adaptation and recovery. For all these reasons, St Lucia is pleased and fully supportive of the efforts by the Caribbean Development Bank to develop a new economic model as a means of measuring national income, the resilience duration adjuster. We are fully cognizant of the need for such new tools to allow us to access the development finance and debt forgiveness, since most of our debt have been accumulated result of factors beyond our control, like climate change, wars, global financial crises and global pandemics. We urge and encourage our regional technocrats, Caricom included, not only to develop these new tools, but to undertake the necessary negotiations to convince international financial institutions of the need to adopt these new measurements in the evaluation of the economies of Caricom states. Our regional technocrats and intellectuals must continue to reevaluate and refine the models being used to assess our economic and social progress, and should be prepared to spend more time in gaining greater insights into the nature of the region's challenges and in the development of models that are better able to assist us in advancing our countries economically and socially. This region has the intellectual wherewithal to devise new and innovative models and strategies for our economic development. Colleagues, there can be no meaningful integration without free movement of people, and so we must move swiftly to create a lasting, reliable and affordable regional transportation infrastructure. We have allowed our discussions on Caribbean Sea and air transport to be guided too much by external market forces rather than by the transportation needs of the people and the businesses of our region. In doing so, we have not only closed our air and sea spaces for business expansion and growth for our local investors, but we have also surrendered the future of our unification projects to the whims of service providers whose only interest is profit. To put it directly, colleagues, Caricom needs Liats, or Caricom needs a better version of Liats. Unless one of our island-owned carriers emerges as a truly regional carrier, not only in terms of countries covered, but with a philosophical commitment to making regionalism work for Caricom citizens, then our regional aspirations will continue to be an elusive dream. In this regard, I wish to commend our Antigone colleague, Prime Minister Gaston Brown, for his efforts in keeping Liat alive. St Lucia therefore stands willing to work with Caricom, St Lucia therefore stands willing to work with Caricom to find solutions to our regional transportation challenges and will assist in any effort designed to find a lasting, reliable and sustainable airline or consortium of airlines to service the region. St Lucia will also be interested in a ferry offering scenic and comfortable service to utilize the potential of our sea routes as an additional traction and transportation option for visitors and citizens alike. St Lucia is committed to any effort by Caricom to find a willing aviation investor to offer dedicated airline services between Africa and the Caribbean. Colleagues, there can be no Caricom future if the young people of our region continue to wallow in despair dash expectations and with crime and gun violence as their most available option. In St Lucia, I've made the development of a youth economy one of my most important pillars for my developmental plan for the country. I say this not only as an economic imperative, but a moral one. In St Lucia, we are determined to create a special space for youth entrepreneurship and business growth within the general economic system. In that space, they will be provided with state resources to help them convert hobbies into entrepreneurship and skills into business through finance and marketing support, training and mentorship, thus creating sustainable livelihoods and a new cadre of indigenous business people. A dedicated agency that is agile, flexible and responsive is being created to drive this policy. I stand ready to work with Caricom to see how we can organically link our development of the youth economy within the existing CSME and then the economic and social development mechanisms within Caricom. Colleagues, our integration will remain continually weakened if we allow the basic principles which has defined our relations to the outside world to be compromised by the foreign policies of other countries. Caricom is strongest when it holds steadfast to the traditional principles of the right to self-determination of our countries, non-interference in internal affairs of sovereign nations, the safeguarding of the Caribbean region as a zone of peace and the pursuit of South-South cooperation. St Lucia declares its readiness to defend and uphold the principles which are in conformity to freedom and dignity of the Caribbean people, respect for the internal sovereignty of our neighbors, and in pursuit of a foreign policy framework that allows it to tap into the developmental potential from regional friends while avoiding making enemies with our longstanding global allies. St Lucia believes that a free, sovereign and economically stable Cuba, Venezuela and Haiti can only mean a free, sovereign and economically stable Caricom. Colleagues, when I was elected as Prime Minister of St Lucia, I came in on a promise to be transparent, to be a listener, to be democratic and to practice as much as possible the principles of sovereign leadership. I have pledged to be guided by the principles of humility, transparency, accountability, inclusiveness and fairness all, and to put the development of people above everything else. I pledge to use my best efforts to eradicate corruption at all levels. Colleagues, as it is for my domestic political life in St Lucia, so I believe it should be for Caricom, as we strengthen our democracies forty to sixty years after independence. Let us all commit ourselves to the principles of good governance, constitutional reform, transparency and accountability, and let us strive to make this region the freest, most democratic and best governed part of the universe, all in the interest of the people of the region we have been called to serve. My expectations and dreams as a new Prime Minister in Caricom are for the attainment of genuine togetherness and integration of our foreign and economic policies. My dream is for flexible and agile Caricom, serving the day-to-day needs of our people and enhancing the faith in our collective destiny. My dream is for Caricom that never forgets that the only reason why we have committed ourselves to public life is to serve the people, and so we must put the people first in all that we do. I would like to close with some borrowed words of wisdom. They are the words of 1987 Nobel winner for peace, Oscar Sanchez of Costa Rica, and I quote, "Hope is the strongest driving force for people. Hope which brings about change, which produces new realities, is what opens man's road to freedom." My friends, let us be honest and acknowledge that Caricom's image throughout our region needs to improve. That must change and change now. Too much time has already been lost. We must begin that vital change by being the change the people have for a very long time been crying for. We must not only talk unity, we must demonstrate to our people that we are together confronted by similar problems that can be resolved only by a united Caricom. I thank you.
Thank you, Prime Minister of St Lucia, Honorable Philip J Pierre.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have all seen the statues in our entry hallway when you arrived, right? Did anybody see them? Did you like them? Well, we have a surprise for you, and it's coming your way right now, because prepare for them to come alive.
And yet, my heart beats for you. Your body so beautiful and clean, pure as nature, warm as the sun, making my heart beat faster. Your passion in life to give to others continually. My heart is flourishing, desiring to experience more with you. Let CARICOM hearts be as one.
Now, wasn't that spectacular? I'm sorry. I have to ask for another round of applause for the dancers, for the statues that came to life tonight. And now, my partner in crime will announce our next speaker.
And while the stage is being recreated for the next remark, we would like to invite, for the remarks, the Secretary General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Gutiérrez.
Distinguished heads of state and government,